Can everybody hear me? All right, folks, we need to call this meeting to order. It is 6:02. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you all for coming this evening. Dave Barber will be joining us in 15 minutes. He had a technical, personal issue he had to deal with, but he will be back here shortly. I'd like to thank again Dyke Newell for hosting us. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for I don't know how long. For some reason, I went to the gymnasium, so pardon me. We ended up finding the right spot after all. Just a couple of things I wanted to mention. First of all, just wanted to report on the results of the cautioning referendum. District-wide, the total was 580 votes for and 138 votes against. Again, I feel despite the poor weather that we had, I want to thank all those folks who showed up to vote. I want to clarify one issue that we had talked seriously about postponing the vote, but because of legal obligations for public notice, we would have had to wait another five weeks before we could reschedule a referendum. We felt that that bumped up too closely against town budgets, town meetings, so we went ahead with the referendum. And then clearly for the folks who showed up, it was in support of the decision that the board made. You know, I do want to recognize that on a per-community basis, we certainly had communities voting against it that would be negatively affected by it and communities voting for it that would be positively affected by it. And my hope is, in the long term, and as we talk about the RSU, we try and think of ourselves as one community. And we're not making decisions based on what's best for our individual community, but perhaps what's best for the RSU as a whole. I think under this formula, each community is responsible for paying for their own children. And it's on an equal basis across the district, whereas in the past, other communities have had to bear some of the responsibility for other communities' children. So I'm hoping that based on the work that the municipalities did and the board did, that this is a direction, a good direction, a direction in the right direction for the district. The other thing I wanted to talk about was I noticed in some of the school reports that I got from some of the administrators, there was an awful lot of discussion about writing. Writing that's happening in the classrooms and specifically here in Dyke Newell, writing that's going on with students, writing for a purpose. Creating pieces that have an impact outside the classroom. Giving students a reason to write beyond just a grade, but to somehow impact folks outside of the school. At Phippsburg, students wrote letters to Senator King and in fact received a response back. And the quote from that newsletter was, "They were quite excited to receive such a detailed response." Also in Phippsburg, the 5th grade, in researching the country's earliest colonies, realized there was much more written about Jamestown than there was about Pawpam. Surprise, surprise. So their goal is to write a book for publication focusing on their own historical fiction of the Pawpam Colony. And I just wanted to bring this up because writing is hard. And as we all know, with those reports that you provide the board on a monthly basis, it's not easy to do that writing. Ask me about the annual report I have to write each year for the different municipalities. But there's a great deal of satisfaction that comes from completing a finished piece and even more satisfaction from having it published. I think we all know that feeling of satisfaction when we've had something published. Knowing that others will read this and potentially be impacted by it. Again, just as those monthly newsletters that we get from the administration. Those impact the board, they really inform the board about what's going on in the schools. And as I was thinking about this, I thought, wouldn't it be a great idea as a board to have some sort of a goal that encouraged all students to have a published piece before the end of the school year? It could be a poem, or it could be a piece of fiction, could be a letter to the editor, or even a thank you note to a company that provides a service or product that students support. So again, in my comments, I just wanted to thank those of you who have provided us with those letters. And I appreciate the writing that is going on in the district and would encourage more of that. So that was sort of my long-winded comments from the chair. We will move on now to item 4.0, to approve and amend minutes from February 25th and March 14th. This is an action item. Let's begin with the minutes from February 25th. Is there a motion to approve as written? Moved by Alan, seconded by Bill. Take a moment to just review these. Anybody noting any changes, additions? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes from February 25th as written, please raise your hand. None opposed, that passes. Okay, and then on the table, you had minutes from the 14th. Is there a motion to approve as written? Moved by Bill, seconded by Steve. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. None opposed, passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I have a couple. We need to add an executive session to the end. Call it item 16.3, to deal with personnel matter. Also, I would like to add, I'm going to add this to 8.5, remind me, a discussion about choice transportation. Patrick, did you have any?
Yes, just two items. One is the school calendar for 13, 14.
Add that to new business? There is no new business. We have no new business.
There is no new business.
Okay, let's make it 14.1, school calendar.
And then there's three nominations that could go under 11.2.
Any other adjustments? Okay. We will move on to item 6.0, public comment section. We have two public comment sections. I ask that if you need to make a comment during this first one, that it be related to an item on the agenda. And you please keep your comments to two minutes or less. If you have to, if you'd like to comment on something outside of the agenda or would like to take longer than two minutes, we have a second public comment section. So is there anyone who would like to speak for the first public comment section? Okay. We will move on then to item 7.0, staff reports. 7.1, Morse High School Schedule Update. Patrick?
Yeah, as you know, we changed the schedule this past, coming into this past year. And so the board, as one of your goals, head down to have an update of how the schedule's working this year. So we have Peter Call and we also have Jonna Stanton, who's here as well, a teacher at the high school, to give you an update on the pros of the schedule, how it's working and any areas that maybe need improvement in the scheduling.
I'm going to let Jonna speak first actually, since the board wanted to hear from a teacher and they wanted to hear what they thought worked best about the schedule. And Jonna's here to speak what she likes best about the schedule.
Good evening. I just had a few notes and I know Brian Stanton sent along some specific data about what he's finding. Just a few comments. This time, two years ago, I used the data that I had from a junior honors class, which I didn't have last year, so I had to go back a couple of years. In my semester-long class, I was able to get through six novels. It was a bit of a push and I had to leave some things out, but I did get through six. At this point in the year, right now, I'm through six novels. And it's been nice because I feel like I've been able to go in-depth more and I don't feel like I'm rushing as much as I was. So as far as material, I think we've probably gained. We haven't lost anything. And from speaking to other English teachers, I think they've found that to be true. I haven't really spoken to a lot of other departments about that. I would also say that three things that I know a lot of the teachers at Morse base their curriculum on are rigor, relevance, and relationships. And I think the rigor has gone up. I feel that the students are really earning their credit this year and that feels good. The relationships that you get with a student after you've had them for two and then three quarters and then four, really is not the same as saying goodbye to them in January. And you know, it was really tough to reestablish relationships with them beginning a whole new semester. So I really appreciated that, especially, I teach ninth graders and that can be really important for them. They feel invested in me and likewise, of course. And I would say the other thing that's been a real plus is the length of classes. I think we've talked a lot about kids who need shorter class times. I don't know if all of you knew, we had 80-minute classes and those have been reduced to 56. And I think I've seen a difference in the behavioral issues in my class and I've heard some really good improvement across the board. And it's also just been better for me. I think I can keep things a lot fresher and keep the kids really interested and they're not as agitated. So that's been great. And I think that's about all I have for non-anecdotal. Probably a little bit of anecdotal too. So I think it's been a real improvement. Thank you.
I'll reiterate some of the things that Jonna said. Mostly what I hear from students, and you can certainly ask the two student members of the board, that they like the shorter periods. Classes go anywhere from 52 to 57 minutes, depending on when they fall. And for a lot of students, that shorter period time is a lot more concentrated and easier to maintain attention than 80-minute classes. I also believe that the rotations, there are positive and a negative in my book. It's very confusing to explain without a chart in front of you, but we have six classes that meet a day and three rotate in the morning and three rotate in the afternoon. And the reason behind the rotation was to make sure that first period always didn't happen at 7:40 and eighth period always didn't happen at 1:15. So it prevents that early morning sleepiness hitting the same period every year, all day, and that tiredness at the end of the day. So that rotates, so that keeps the kids kind of fresh and on their toes in that sense. In terms of a negative though, that rotation is still problematic in terms of trying to schedule outside classes. Say for example, Kyle wanted to take a class at SMCC here in Bath and it was offered at nine o'clock in the morning. He could not take that class because the same period that he would miss would never always occur at nine o'clock. So it makes it very difficult, well, it makes it impossible actually, for kids to take outside classes. Every time we have that rotation, because different classes impacted every day, it's no way we can do that. The other problem that we have with the schedule that I think we can tweak next year and hopefully overcome is the number of study halls. We probably have 87 sections of study halls. And many of those sections come from the fact that when we went to shorter classes, the state requires that sciences have lab periods. And you really can't do a full teaching and lab in 52 minutes. So we had to add of one of those four-day rotations, a lab period. And so since classes meet three times in the rotation, one of those periods is a lab. That leaves two other periods where the kids are not in class. So where do they have to go? They have to go into study hall. And so that, when you times out by the number of labs we have in biology and chemistry, resulted in a lot of study halls. We believe we have a solution for that next year, which is that we can offer health opposite the labs in 10th grade. And we're thinking of offering another class called Reed for College that Mr. Igmanson teaches, a very popular 11th grade class, opposite the chemistry labs. That would greatly reduce the number of study halls and we're going to try that out as we start to do the master schedule. That tends to be probably the biggest problem I find with the schedule. I'd say most teachers find the schedule good. The science teachers do miss the longer periods because they were the ones who were making the most use of 80 minutes. But they have found that the lab time has been sufficient, but sometimes they actually think it's a little bit too long. Presumably, it used to be 80 minutes, now the lab times are 110 minutes. But that could be a long time. I think some students find that those double lab periods are also a little long. You can see Kyle nodding his head, but it's true. Minor things to the schedule that I don't think really impacted too much. You know, they still find it confusing. Students have to have that schedule in their planner or in the back of their notebook or somewhere in their phone, so they know what day it is. The students handle it better than the teachers. I think the teachers sometimes find it a little confusing as well because we have an A and a B and a C and a D day and then you just never know which period it is. But that's, I think as kids get used to it, it's minor. Overall, I think it's working pretty well. I think the length of class is exactly right. I think 55 minutes is a really good amount of time to be in class. And if anything that I like best about the schedule is that length of time. So I can answer any questions or Kyle can speak up?
From the board, are there any questions for Peter? Are there other staff members? I know that we have other staff members in the audience. I'm curious, from their standpoint, have they seen the schedule as being beneficial or how it's compared to the previous 4x4 schedule? Good thing, bad thing? Any other staff?
You know, are you looking at Rick and Laura?
I'm with Joyce, Social Studies Department. I don't have much to add to what was said, except the only thing that I would emphasize, to me, any schedule is going to have its drawbacks and strengths. There were some things I missed about the 80-minute blocks, absolutely. And I think there are some things that some students would miss about them, particularly in certain types of classes. To me, the biggest advantage of the schedule we have now is that I think it has the most benefits with the least deficits on it. That's really what it comes down to. And you know, in a perfect world, I'd love to have some of my classes, for example, the upper classes, the ones that are primarily students junior and senior. I think those classes often will work better in longer segments than some of the ones for the younger students. Last year, we had a mixed schedule where we tried out with a freshman team, shorter periods, while we still had the old schedule. And that was much preferable. I think the 80-minute periods are far too long for freshmen coming in. So, but I would agree with what Peter said and also with what Jonna said, that I think if you take it all in balance, I've covered more this year and I've covered it in more depth. And to me, that's the biggest piece. The flip side of it is, it's a much more tiring schedule for teachers and I'm getting old for those schedules. So it was a lot easier for me to get my breath under the old one, but I really think in balance, this one's superior.
Great, thank you for coming up, I appreciate that. Any comments from the student representatives or questions?
I would agree with what Principal Call, Mrs. Stanton, and Mr. Joyce said. I've had a positive experience with the schedule. I think most students generally feel that it works well for them and that the period length is good, that students like the fact that they have continuity through the year in seeing their teachers. Students also like that they don't feel kind of crunched into the semester block thing and that if they fall behind in a unit or if they don't understand something, especially in the math and science classes, they have a little bit of time and they can catch up and they can get back on track without kind of being pushed on to the next item. But at the same time, I think we get a lot more material and the rigor's a lot higher. So two thumbs up for me.
Thank you, Kyle. Veronica, did you want to add?
Not going to lie, it took me a little bit to get used to this schedule. I liked the 4x4 schedule a little bit better because I could double up in my classes. And this year, I wanted to do both statistics and financial, math, but I couldn't. So I had to sacrifice it and just getting used to the schedule. It was difficult. I think it took me up to the beginning of the 2013 year to actually memorize my schedule instead of two weeks as to the other schedules. But it's growing on me. I do like it, it's a lot shorter in the classes and I like that. I think it's one thumbs up for me.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Robin?
You mentioned that kids taking outside classes is a problem. There are still students that are able to do that though, right?
Not at the local universities unless the classes meet outside of the school hour. If it's going to be during the day, they would have to miss a whole morning block or a whole afternoon block.
But there's still possibility.
There's still possibilities of taking the classes after school and online. But we used to be able to have a cooperation with SMCC and University College here in Bath and we can't do that anymore because those classes are offered during school hours. So, yeah.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Peter? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to committee reports. We'll begin 8.1 with the Woolwich Building Committee Report. Patrick?
Yeah, just real quick, we continue to make progress with the heating system. And we've asked for an extended warranty and we feel like we're making, again, good progress with the heating system at Woolwich. And we're close to the redesign of the woodchip design and we hope that we'll have that very soon and that the work will be done this summer redesigning the woodchip bin out back so that it's done well and that we don't have to continue to clean up after every delivery. So those are the only two, well, not the only two, but those are the two big items left. And my hope is that in a couple of months, we won't have to have this report on this, on the board level.
Do we have a date on the installation of the replacement roof, the awning?
We don't yet because it's still in route.
Okay. Any other questions for Patrick on what's going on over at Woolwich? Okay, we will move on to 8.2, Facilities Committee. Bill?
Yes, with all of the activity that occurred around the issue of budget, finance, the referendum...
Do you want to take the mic?
With all the activity that was going on around the issue of the budget, finance, the referendum and the work up to the referendum, we decided to postpone facilities, which was scheduled during that period. And we'll be meeting on April 9th. Will be the next meeting of facilities, at which time we should have some information on the engineering study of Morse. And we already have what I think is a final draft, but we probably will have the final report from Harriman relative to the elementary schools. So we'll have some work to do on the 9th, but it will be the first meeting in, what, almost two months?
Okay. Any questions for Bill on facilities? Okay, we'll move on to item 8.3, Finance Committee Report. Turn that over to Steve.
Thanks, Steve. The Finance Committee met twice in March, May, March 4th and March 11th. We had extensive presentations from the administrators and I'd like to say I appreciate the effort that Patrick and his administrative team put in to those background reports that we received during those two meetings. I'm also, I'd also like to say I appreciate the board participation during those meetings as well. During those meetings, we began to discuss an outline of the budget, get some background material from the administrators. I think it was very instructive to the board, the Finance Committee members that were there. And puts us in a good place moving forward as we enter extensive discussions on the budget. We are going to be meeting in April, April 4th versus Thursday and I believe we will be discussing the budget again.
It's all about the budget?
Yeah, it's all about the budget.
Any questions for Steve on the Budget Committee? Most of you attended, all of you attended at least one of those meetings, if not both of those meetings, so I think everybody's up to speed. Dave, do you have a quick report on Policy Committee?
Yes, Policy Committee met on March 14th. We extensively reviewed personnel policies with regard to personal electronic devices and also social media policies. Those have been submitted to SEA for further review and approval. We have four policies for second readings later in the program here. And two and four are of some particular interest in that the TRIPS and TRIP Guidelines policy has been extensively modified to reduce the redundant language incorporated there. And the Student Discipline Action addresses issues with regard to seclusion and use of force, which as you know, has been part of some discussion at the state legislative level. There are two policies for first readings. They proposed school budget later in this meeting and a first reading for the policy on bullying, which has been somewhat revised.
Okay, any questions for Dave on policy? All right, we'll move on to item 8.5, Choice Transportation. I just wanted to bring up this item in the context of committees. I attended a SAG meeting at West Bath and was also informed about this situation at Woolwich as well, that what's occurred as a result of us not offering choice transportation is there's become a bit of a congestion issue, both with drop-off but more so with pickups at the end of the day. And both schools, West Bath and Woolwich, have been impacted by this. It's taken up a lot of time, they've had to instate some kind of in-house policies. So one of the comments that, or results that came out of the SAG So, one of the comments that, or results that came out of the SAG meeting at West Bath was, I think we all recognize that there isn't the funding in this year's budget to revisit the choice transportation issue. But at the same time, I was hoping with the board's consent, that we could charge at least the West Bath SAG and maybe the Woolwich SAG as well to form a subcommittee to examine this issue and see if there are any creative ways that we might be able to alleviate the situation without it impacting our bottom line. So, with that, I'll, I don't know if there are questions from the board, comments from the board, but I did want to bring it to your attention. No questions, no comments.
Seems so. Last year, probably the problem was that Fisher Mitchell, I think, was being impacted because of, or the bus people were having a problem because of meeting kids and dropping off, so that there was a bottleneck there somewhere. So, you know, we just moved it from one place to another, I guess.
I think ultimately, the impact that we saw was, both at Dyke Newell and at Fisher Mitchell, it impacted the start time for some students. Students were arriving 10 or 15 minutes late to school in order to accommodate choice transportation. And you take 15 minutes and multiply it over the course of the year, and that's a lot of instruction missed, particularly for kids who are going to the school in their region. But I'm hoping that maybe this committee, this subcommittee, could try and do some work that, again, wouldn't impact the bottom line and wouldn't impact those students at Dyke Newell and Fisher Mitchell. So, I just need to get a sense from the board if they're in favor of, again, and I'm not asking a board member to serve on this subcommittee, I know we all serve on enough subcommittees, but just to charge the West Bath SAG and also them working with the Woolwich SAG to just look into this issue and maybe report back to us towards the end of the year.
Well, I've been witness to, at least, the pickup process at West Bath, and it's kind of, it's organized, but it's somewhat chaotic. And my initial reaction was it was risky, or there was some risk involved in the way things were being done. I mean, every precaution's being taken, but with so many cars moving around, and the buses, of course, there's a certain inescapable risk. Chaos. Well, that's the word I used at the time, but I wouldn't characterize it that way.
So, is there anyone on the board who would be opposed to that? Let me put it in those terms? No?
I, for one, would encourage the folks to do it and to try and come up with a solution of some kind. I'm very open to a presentation.
Wouldn't the solution, though, involve the greater community, the greater school community? I mean, I realize that you see the implications of it, you see in the parking lots of West Bath and Woolwich.
Right.
But, but some of those folks come from Bath to drop their kids off, and, you know, I don't know whether or not, I realize that the problem manifests itself in West Bath and Woolwich, I realize that, but it's, to me, it just seems like it is a broader concern.
Yeah.
That does involve parents who live, you know, who live in Bath and might not attend, whose kids might not attend West Bath or Woolwich or any other.
No, I think you're absolutely right, and my hope is, this subcommittee would reach out to those folks and get a sense of what the impact is district-wide, and come to us with a solution that would, or at least some options, that would try and find some level of balance there. And I think, my feeling is, as I said, budget-wise, we don't have, we don't have the dollars right now, which we're going to get into the budget discussion, to look at accommodating this need or taking care of this issue through financing transportation. And as a board, we're serving on an awful lot of subcommittees as it is. I thought maybe an option might be let the SAGs work on it and report back to the, back to the board in a couple of months, and maybe they've come up with. You know, by them putting some time into this, maybe they'll come up with a solution that we haven't come up with. So. Emily and Tom, would you mind reaching out to your SAGs and letting them know that the board would encourage them to look into this issue? And perhaps, you know, they can communicate with me, and we'll set up a timeframe when they could respond back to the board with what they found out, whether it's the end of this year or first of next year. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. Thank you. So, we look forward to hearing from that group within the next couple of months, hopefully. All right. We'll move on to item 9.0, Superintendent's Report.
I'll try to be brief, but we have quite a few items. Just last weekend, you could tell from Joel's backup, that we had students go to the Skills USA competition from BRCTC, and we had two students, both in creative arts, Tony Gregoire winning a silver, and Autumn Thompson winning a bronze. So, congratulations to them. Recently, in the paper, you saw grades five, six, and seven go to a Southern Maine Regional Math Meet, and all students did very well, and our teams did very well. And I'm pleased to, I think I'm pleased to announce, as long as I'm willing to fund it, that we'll have a middle school Lego Robotics team compete soon. And my goal, after seeing some second-grade students here at Dyke Newell do Lego Robotics, is that in the future, is having multiple levels here at our schools compete in those types of competition. Morse One Act Play won the regional competition, and they recently competed in the state finals in Camden. And here, regionally, we had four people recognized, one for their writing of the play, and then three other people for their acting. And at the States, four students were recognized, I think some were for their acting, but also some were for the stage crew as well. So, very well done, and maybe you saw an article in the Portland Press Herald with Kevin O'Leary and his wife. I don't think they were competing against each other, because she coaches at Wayne Fleet, but it was a nice article. We have two students, Alex Gates and Kayden Malcolm, that will represent RSU-1 at the 2013 State Geography Bee, and that will be at UMF on April 5th. They won their respective school Geography Bees, but they also have to take a qualifying exam to be one of 100 sixth and seventh and eighth grader students, eighth-grade students that are there on the 5th. And I can tell you, those questions are not easy after watching the one at Fisher Mitchell. Pleased to announce that the district was a 2013 Honoree of the Caring About Lives in Maine Award sponsored by the Maine Suicide Prevention Program. Last Thursday, Sharon Morrell, nurse at Morse High School, and I attended their conference to receive recognition. Sharon was honored for all that she has done at Morse and also at the other schools for suicide prevention. And also, the district was recognized for our proactive approach as a school, but also as a community as well. The last one, will take me a little bit longer to work through, but I don't want to rush through it, is just that West Bath Principal Emily Thompson and teachers Ida Beal and Nancy Riggs just returned from Baltimore, Maryland, for the National Expeditionary Learning Conference. And they presented, and our school designer, Kippy Smith, said West Bath's approach to developing and maintaining a student code of character is one of the best that she's seen. In addition to this recognition, EL also selected Principal Emily Thompson as one of three principals in the network of 165 schools to be highlighted for instructional leadership. They spent a month leading up to the conference documenting Emily's instructional moves at West Bath. Some of the things that they complimented her on was using data to inform her, inform instruction at the school, the importance of professional learning communities, flexible grouping of students across grade levels, use of learning targets with staff, and the unique way in which they determine their priorities and goals that focus on student achievement. EL leaders stated that West Bath's leadership is intentional and consistently focused on student learning, and they wanted other schools to learn from the principal and the faculty. Emily, am I embarrassing you too much now? They also reported that West Bath's progress towards the goals of improving student achievement through implementation of the EL model is unusually strong for a school in just its third year of partnership. So, congratulations to Emily and also to her staff for an exemplary job that they've done at West Bath.
We will move on to item 9.2, Financial Report, and that will be presented by Ruth Moore.
Good evening. The report that you have in front of you is for the month of February, and it doesn't vary much from the month of January, which, in my mind, is good, because it means that we're going along at a normal pace that I had anticipated. We're still under the freeze. Most of the amount that you see, the $9.8 million that is encumbered as salary and benefits to get us through to the end of the year, which also includes summer pays for the teachers. But within that amount, there's approximately $300,000 that we have encumbered that is an amount that we are not going to allow to be spent, which is what we're holding for the freeze. And we're going to look at this in depth. I think Patrick and I will look at it sometime during the month of April to see whether or not, if we continue along the way that we're going, hopefully, that we can release some of those funds so that they can be spent. There's still no word from the state regarding the Maine Care, so I'm still anticipating the same amount that they, that we were told that they would probably withhold from subsidy. I think that they're just behind. I don't know if they'll just, in my mind, we thought that they would go through the billing through March of this year, but so far, it's only through June? I can't remember now. It was June or July. Anyway, so, if they catch up, then it will come out of this year as I've projected. If not, I suspect that they may move that into next year, and we'll still have to deal with it, you know, no matter which year. The revenues look just about the same. We're still looking at a curtailment. I haven't heard that that's not going to happen, and so, if there's any questions?
Any questions for Ruth? That was easy.
It was. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. All right. We'll move on to All Business. We'll begin with item 10.1. This is the second reading of Policy CHCAA, School and District Handbooks. This is an action item. Is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Seconded by Dave, seconded by Alan. Is there any further discussion? Anyone have any changes, comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve as written, please raise your hand. Okay. We'll move on to 10.2, Second Reading of Policy IJOA, TRIPS, and we'll take that in conjunction with Policy IJOA-R Trip Guidelines. Is there a motion?
I think, Julie's here as well, but I think that we talked about, and David, that we did not feel the need to have the IJOA-R, the TRIP Guidelines, as part of this policy.
Okay.
So, really, we're just focused on the IJOA.
That it would incorporate all the essential elements, is that right?
I'm sorry. We're just looking at Policy IJOA-TRIPS. Is there a motion to accept as written?
So moved.
Moved by Alan. Seconded by Bill. Any comments? Any questions about the changes? Steve?
Just one comment. Under application for authorization of TRIPS, you, the policy refers to all TRIPS. We'll have specific information forms filled out, but that's all, is that all TRIPS sanctioned and non-sanctioned, or just sanctioned?
There would be sanctioned.
Could we, could we just insert sanctioned there, just to clarify?
So, where would you want to insert sanctioned?
Well, you could do it right in the heading, Application for Authorization for Sanctioned TRIPS.
Okay. So, Alan, you made the motion to approve. You modify your motion to approve with changes?
With the change.
Okay. Any other changes? Any other discussion? So, there's a motion on the table to approve with one change, including sanctioned, in the heading of Application for Authorization for TRIPS. All those in favor of the motion to approve with changes, raise your hand. None opposed? Okay. We'll move on to item 10.3, Second Reading of Policy JK, Student Discipline. Is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Moved by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan. Any comments? Any changes? All those in favor of the motion to approve as written, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Okay. Item 10.4, Second Reading of Policy ADAA, School System Commitment to Standards for Ethical and Responsible Behavior. Is there a motion to approve as written?
So moved.
Moved by Dave, seconded by Steve. Any comments? Any questions? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve as written, raise your hand. And none opposed? Okay. We'll move on to Review of Board Goals. Again, we had seven goals at the beginning of the season, the beginning of the school year. We've addressed a number of these. We still have a couple items that we need to address. Those will be addressed before the end of the year?
It should be.
Okay. Patrick, did you have any comments on the academic goals for the district?
Not at this time. Our plan would be at the end of the year, in the summer, or, you know, like this year, it could be, sometimes it could be the beginning of the year, depending on when we get some of our assessment results back. But we certainly plan to do that, like we did this year at Woolwich.
Okay, great. We look forward to hearing that. We will move on to Personnel Items. Begin with item 11.1, Resignation.
See, I just, I just had two items under Personnel Items. One is just informational, item 11.1, was the resignation of Nancy Harriman, Principal at Fisher Mitchell, and Nancy's here tonight, and I just want to thank Nancy for 10 years in the district. Seven is Director of Curriculum, and three is Principal at Fisher Mitchell. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Nancy.
And then the new business, 11.2, was just, we have three nominations to bring to you tonight. I don't know if you want me to go through each one of them, and you want to vote as a group, or whether you want to do it individually. It's totally up to you.
Why don't we take them as a group?
Okay. So the first one is nomination for Physical Education Teacher at Morse, Rebecca Roche. We had 21 applicants for the position. We interviewed three people. In all of these, we always have a committee of at least three people, sometimes more than that, doing the interviewing piece. For speech therapist, we're nominating Joe Ellen McCosh. We interviewed three people for this position as well. And the last one is Morse High School Science Teacher, Lauren Andrews, who's currently serving as, filling someone that's on sabbatical right now. And we had 16 applications, interviewed five people for that position, and we're pleased to nominate all three of these people to join us next year.
Okay, is there a motion from the board regarding these nominations?
I take, I take it back. We're pleased to have two of them join us next year. Our speech and language person has already begun with us because of timing issues.
Okay. So there is a motion by Bill to approve the nominations. Is there a second? Seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? Any questions for Patrick? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Any opposed? None opposed? That passes. Okay, we will get on to item 12.0, first reading of the 2014 Proposed School Budget. Before I turn this over to Patrick, I just want to bring everyone up to speed as to where the board stands with the budget. Our approach this year was different than in years past. It began with the board holding a workshop, a retreat of sort, where we looked at where we felt there were needs within the district. During that retreat, we had feedback from the administration. I felt that feedback was very positive. It was really eye-opening to the board, and it gave us a bit of a direction in terms of looking at the budget this year. We then asked the administration to present budgets on a department-by-department or school-by-school basis. Those presentations were done to the Finance Committee, but we had encouraged all board members to participate, and as I said earlier, I really want to, as Steve said, thank the board for attending at least one, and in some cases, both of those meetings. And I think the administration presented budgets based on the needs that they had expressed, and those needs that the board had supported during the retreat. Once we had those two meetings, we were then, we had a special board meeting to discuss the budget. We then looked at those recommendations in financial terms. And to be perfectly frank with those folks who are watching and those folks who are here, if we were to include all of the things that we felt and the administration felt were necessary in the budget, we would be looking at an overall increase of 9.71% to our budget. Once we saw that number, we tossed it back to the superintendent and said, are there any areas that we can make some cuts, make some adjustments, get that number down? Superintendent came back to us with a preliminary budget. We had another board meeting to look at that budget, and that essentially brings us to where we are this evening. Before I turn it over to Patrick, is there anything that I've left out from the rest of the board in terms of the process? Okay, so I'll turn it over to you for the first reading of the budget.
I'll try to be brief, because this really is the first opportunity for us just to say where the budget's at right now, as well as to direct you to our district website. By, I would think tomorrow at noon time, we would have much more detailed information that will be on that. My initial PowerPoint that went to the Finance Committee should be up there already, or should be up there by tomorrow, as well as some more detailed information. I would echo what Tim said, is that, you know, in the districts that I've been in, I think we've been as proactive this year as I have seen a board be in all of my other places that I've been. And we've had a lot of meetings to discuss the budget, because we are doing it, as Tim said, a little different this year. I mean, the end results could be somewhat similar, but often a board will recommend or expect a percentage increase, let that be flat, let it be 2%, or maybe they give a dollar figure. And then the administrative team basically has to just go and try to find that money, and sometimes with that approach, an administrative team doesn't really sometimes get a chance or take the opportunity to really look at the needs of the district first before just going and saying, this is what we have currently, and we need to get to this, so we need to reduce these non-labor or these, this labor piece of the budget. Our goal is going into this, and I, first off, to say, this is my least favorite part of the job that I do, and I think every superintendent would tell you the same thing if they're not, if they don't, I think they're lying. You can't please everybody, and I think we have a fairly tight administrative team, and it's healthy to have arguments. It's healthy to stick up for your, your own schools and your own cost center, but in these economic times, it's, it's difficult. And our job as educators is to, well, I'll tell you, what the three goals that we had going into this budget was to present a budget that supports the goals and priorities of the district, to respond to the expectations of our communities for a quality educational product, but at the same time, still trying to balance the economic piece locally as well as statewide and nationally. And it's easier said than done, but those are kind of the, the lenses that we're trying to look through as we go through this process. With that said, the administration, I'm going to go through this fairly quickly, and, but with that said, the administration tried, well, we did, prioritize what we felt we needed for resources and programming, and attempted to try to break these priorities into a three-year kind of cycle, realizing that we couldn't do everything in year one with the financial situation. So priority items in year one from our discussions included adding four special education technicians, K through 12, a school resource officer at Morse High School, pre-K, a new site at Phippsburg, increased slots from 97 to 110, 113, and moving the pre-K from three days a week to four days a week. A life skills program, 3 to 5, and for grades 6 through 8, and an, and an additional maintenance person for our entire district. Year two items included alternative education at the middle school, but also at the high school level, district-wide behavior consultant, and an increased guidance services at some of our locations. Year three included middle school health and foreign language, and increased gifted and talented staff. And just without even, well, kind of making this grid, we were focused a lot on the educational piece that goes to our students. At the same time, what weighs heavily on us is the facilities, the maintenance, food service, a lot of areas that are behind the scenes that are, if we don't put money and attention into those, this district's going to be in trouble in the future. There's, there are some areas in this budget that we have less control over, and these would be salary and benefit adjustments, and the Medicare seed money that the board has heard a lot about, all together totaling approximately $1.4 million. When we factor in these adjustments in all of our year one priority items that we just listed, just year one, that's what Tim was referring to, that our overall operating budget increase would be around nine and a half, 9.7. So then, again, we've been meeting weekly with the board. So last week, we went back and made some adjustments to the, what I would call the first draft, and in an attempt to reduce it, and tonight, I think Ruthie, I don't know if she gave it out to the, to the public here as well, but the board members have this, is that right now, we have it a little bit over 6% increase. However, again, I'm going back to those goals, trying to be fiscally responsible, but at the same time advocating for what I feel like, what we feel like the system needs, is that by reducing it down to 6%, this means reducing supplies and equipment, possibly bonding some of our significant maintenance needs in this district, not increasing pre-K like we would like. As an example, we still, right now, would add the Phippsburg site. We still would add students, but not go from three days a week to four days a week. And also possibly not allowing us, well, not allowing us to develop a life skills program at 3.5 and 6.8, and that we, that's a program that we really feel, programming, that we feel is essential to some of our special needs students. The proposed new items to the FY14 budget, at this point, again, this is a fluid process, so things can change, is the for ed techs that we talked about in special education, the school resource officer, increased pre-K, like I told you, to some degree, and an additional maintenance person, which comes out to be approximately $303,000. So tonight is really just that broad overview. We have a handout for you, but we have workshops, I think April 8th is when we have a budget workshop coming up, where the board will have a dialogue about the budget, when the public can come and ask questions about what's in the budget, what's not. And so, again, it's a fluid process. If you want more specific information about expenses, revenues, debt service to the district, again, by tomorrow, you should be able to access that information on our district website. And again, we'll continue to make adjustments to this budget as we go. So I don't know if board members want to add, Tim want to add anything else at this point?
The only thing I would add, just to follow up, the first thing I would add is, again, as we have scheduled currently, the way the process is going to take place is we will have a public forum on Monday, April 8th, in Woolwich at 6 o'clock. That will be an opportunity for the board to discuss the budget in more detail, to focus specifically on the budget, but also to give the public an opportunity to speak directly to items within the budget. We will address the budget again at our April board meeting, which we have not rescheduled, was originally scheduled for the 22nd, but we do need to reschedule that. And we will have a second reading of the budget on Monday, May 6th. Again, that will be a public forum, that will be an opportunity for the public to speak first, and then for the board to finalize and vote on a budget, to then present on June 4th, which is the district budget meeting. That is an opportunity for all the citizens to vote up or down all or parts of the budget before it goes to referendum. At that point, we don't leave that meeting until we have a budget that has passed by the folks who are present for that meeting. Once that's been voted up, then on Tuesday, June 11th, we will have the budget validation referendum, which is where you will go to your polling places and vote the, the budget up or down. So there will be numerous opportunities for the public to participate, to air on this, but again, as Patrick said, this is our sort of initial public presentation of the budget in terms of where we stand now. That said, are there any comments from the board? All right?
I would just add two more things.
Go ahead.
Just to say is that, because it's an important question, but again, we don't present everything here tonight. I mean, we've gone through a lot with our Finance Committee and the board, but that our enrollment projected for next year is to basically remain the same or slightly increase. And then from 2008 to 2013, over the last five years, this district has either reduced or eliminated over 43-plus positions in the system, anything from classroom teachers to specialists, guidance counselors, special ed. So it's just, again, we're not unlike other school systems, but again, I, I give a lot of credit to the board this year of trying to look at it from a point of view of needs first, and then obviously then going back to that other goal of trying to be fiscally responsible at the same time.
Okay, I had asked the board when we met on Friday, we had discussed this budget in some length, and I asked you to give it some consideration over the weekend as it had been presented to us, and bring any comments, any concerns, talk about any specific programs that you might have this evening. Based on what we looked at or what we discussed on Friday, is there any questions or anything that anyone would like to add? Okay? I'm just going to say this, in general, again, to sort of convey to the public, I've been on the board for five years now, and I've seen us make significant cuts district-wide. Much of that has been a function of loss of state revenue, loss of federal revenue, issues of enrollment, issues of trying to keep costs down to the local taxpayer. I think there were a few major areas that we saw this year that made us look at the budget perhaps in a new light. One, we looked at district-wide, where do we have specific areas of need, and where can we have the greatest level of impact? There is a great deal of poverty in this district. We have a lot of special needs students, and we don't feel that we have the staff or the resources on a school-by-school basis to either address those folks in a way that is fair to them, and also in a way that is fair to the remaining students in the classroom. So fundamentally, one of the biggest increases that we're looking at this year is an increase in ed tech staff to support those special needs folks, but also to maybe allow the teachers to divert education to the rest of the classroom. Secondly, facilities-wide, we have made efforts since we consolidated as a school district to try and address some of our facilities. We're doing it with one facilities manager and one full-time individual. We've noticed even with a brand-new school in Woolwich, there are things that come up that require an awful lot of time and attention. Facilities is something that we've neglected the past couple of years in an effort to make changes, and we feel that by adding one additional person and potentially bonding some changes windows specifically in two of our schools are needs that we've neglected for a long time that need to be addressed right away. Thirdly, there are a number of items, and I don't have the number in front of me, but as Patrick alluded to, there are a number of items within this budget that if we were to cut out all the additional programming and staff, facilities that we've talked about are still going to constitute an increase to the district. Those are negotiated salary and benefit increases, and those are, it is the main care seed money which affects special, special education, some increases there to the budget. So again, sort of stressing my opinion and giving a general overview of the budget, I feel that's, that's where we stand right now. Anyone from, Steve, you had a comment?
Well, the, the presentation, the first reading, you know, you have to, excuse me, this is my first time through this process, but, I mean, what we're, what we're looking at now are the administration's recommendations. at now are the administration's recommendations on the budget. The board will have a couple of, many, more than a couple, but several opportunities to, to comment and recommend suggestions for changes in the budget, right, as we, as we move through this process. So I don't, I don't know if you're asking whether any of those specific comments be made at this point, you want to reserve those to the workshop meeting in Woolwich?
I think anytime we begin the discussion is as good a time as any, but if folks want to wait until the meeting in, in April, where we focus on the budget specifically, we can do that, but again, I just didn't know if there were any reflections over the weekend on some of the discussions that we had on, on Friday.
Well, we, we had a very, I thought, a very productive discussion on Friday. We sent Patrick back, he did, he did what we asked him to do, which, which was to put together a budget that reflects a set of priorities which, which he and the, and the administrative team have, have recommended and suggested. I think specifically, I had some comments, suggestions on, on expenditures related to staff development, which, which I would like to, and hope over the next month or two months, we have, have a chance to get into in more detail. And I, I know you touched on life skills and took the program off, or deferred the program in its totality to next, to a next year, three years out, I don't know if you were specific on that, but I guess I would just, I would wonder whether or not there's a way to phase a program like that in over a period of time, to look at some expenditure in this budget on life skills, and then build that incrementally as we move forward over the next two or three years.
Yeah, I, I guess I would say, going back to your first comment, that the, probably the first, the first, the 9.7 increase reflected a lot of conversations with the administrative team. And then when we went back and, and got to the six point, a little bit over 6.0 increase, again, that meant removing some things that was hard for us as an administrative team to do. Again, by me saying, and this is a fluid process, is that some of the things that we took off priority one, would still be my goal to even try to, for example, if we could, through this spring, if we could find monies from, you know, looking at different areas, I'm not saying we can, but would be that, that 3.5, life skills, would be one area that we would look to see if we could somehow make some progress with that, maybe not the 6.8, but look at the 3.5 as an example, and try to get a program beginning so that we can add to it in the future. And just to clarify, Steve, I think, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but with professional development, the conversation we had last Friday was more a concern, I think, for making sure that we had sufficient funds in PD, correct, for the whole staff?
For the entire staff.
I had mentioned this on Friday, and I don't know if you have those numbers here, or if it was in the handout that went out. Again, based on the budget that you've presented, we're talking about an overall increase of 1.6 million, 1,648,574. Again, can you clarify for me, of that 1.6 million, what percentage of that, or what is the total dollar figure that we are obligated under either contractual salary and benefit increases and the main care piece? And what, I think you referred to, of that 1.6 million, only 300,000 are the increases in staffing and programming that we're discussing?
Yeah, Ruthie, correct me if I'm wrong, but for contractual increases, we were looking at salaries, you know, 443 and change, thousand benefits, but this includes that main purse, the retirement piece as well, that's built in there. So that makes our district looking at 534,000 for that piece, because, it gets a long story, but that the state is asking or requesting districts to take on that 2.6%. And then the main care of 450,000. So, you know, we came up with a total of about 1.4 million and change, out of that 1.6 million and change, that, again, when you say obligated, someone could argue over here that, that that's with our current staffing, you know, and, and a system could argue that, well, that's not really obligated if, you know, if a system can reduce staffing, but I think we've, you know, we've kind of had that conversation. So yeah, 1.4 out of 1.65 is, I guess you'd say is obligated, if you want to use that term. And 303 was kind of the projection for the new staffing, and also the increase of pre-K in priority one.
And 303,000 on our overall budget represents what percent? Ruthie, do you know? And I could...
I can do the math.
Just slightly over 1%. All right, anyone else from the board? Okay, well, I, again, I would ask that be prepared to come to that meeting on the 8th. We'll be focusing strictly on the budget, and that really is the time to voice any concerns, changes, discussions, where we stand with the budget. That's really the meeting where, where that gets done. So please come prepared to have that discussion. We will move on to first reading of policy J.I.C.K. This is the bullying policy. Patrick or Dave, is there anything that you wanted to add to this, or bring to our attention?
It's really just an update. You can see a lot of things crossed out, ours was a little bit outdated, coming from Maine School Management, Drummond and Woodson.
Okay. All right, be prepared to vote on that at the next board meeting. We'll move on to item 14.0, out-of-state field trip request. This is an action item. Patrick, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about this before we take a vote?
Yeah, I mean, Emily's here too, if she wanted to speak about it, but it's grade, grade five with Megan Phillips, and it's, you can see the Freedom Trail and Paul Revere House, and building the background knowledge for your spring expedition. So it's, again, it's not overnight, it's just a day trip, you can see leaving at 7:00 in the morning, getting back around 8:30, 9:00 o'clock, and it's funded by the PTO and fifth-grade fundraising.
Taking the bus out, or the train out of Brunswick, great.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this field trip? Moved by Bill.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dave. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. None opposed? Passes. Okay, we'll move on to item 14.1, discussion of the school calendar. You received a hard copy of that today. Patrick?
Judy can, she's going to speak to you just quickly about the process and any major changes from previous years.
Good evening. The calendar you have in front of you has been through quite a long process. I think we actually started, Joel, maybe late last fall, and it's also been a nice reminder of how little local control we actually have, because I think many of you might be aware of the fact that the state has a rule that all of the school districts that send to a regional tech center can have no more than five dissimilar days among their calendars. And so that's been quite a challenge. It used to be nine days, but this year it is down to five. And so when we started this process, we really started with meeting, meeting with Joel's group of superintendents, we all brought our calendars together, and actually, one of the school districts already had a draft calendar, so that kind of started our process in terms of measuring ours against theirs. And then concurrent with that process, we had an in-house process, which started with emailing the, everyone in the district to say, you know, what did you like about this year's calendar, what suggestions do you have? And we got that information back through email the first time. Then we set up a committee with four members plus myself. There was elementary, middle, high school representation, and administrative in addition to myself. The committee met with their staffs and got feedback, and then we met as a committee, and came up with a draft calendar, sent that back out to all the faculty and administrators, got another round of feedback. We met again as a committee just this past week. And that's the, the draft that you have in front of is the result of both of the processes with Joel's group and with our in-house group. There are a couple of changes, mostly in professional development days, because any professional development day that we have that's dissimilar from, say, Booth Bay or Lincoln Academy, or, who am I forgetting? Was Cassin, is a dissimilar day, even a half-day counts that way. So you'll notice that in August, we have our two typical PD days before students arrive, and then the start of school is very similar to the way it's been. Our October 11th PD day, it was aligned with that of Booth Bay, and I suspect, I think all the districts that sent to BRCTC have that day in common now. Parent-teacher conferences, you know, we've gotten feedback from teachers and feedback from administrators on those, and those are in the blue in, for the fall conferences in November. And then Christmas vacation, January, February, those things are pretty much the same. You can see that the parent-teacher conferences for the high school are in February, but the ones for K to 8 are in April. And then the biggest change for PD days is in March, and we typically have had a March PD day, we've not had two in a row, but we had another PD day that we had to find a place for. And knowing that two PD days at the beginning of school is a very powerful thing to have in terms of consistency, and that really intensive time to work on something together, we, the committee really felt that that was a great use of our time. However, the, the PD day on the 14th is actually a comp day for high school people, so the high school people just have one day there. K to 8 has the two days in a row. And I think those are pretty much the highlights, you know, the end of school, but I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Okay, Judy, I, as you know, I sit on the advisory board for the career and technical centers, so I've had a first glimpse of this, but this is the first time the rest of the board has had an opportunity to look at this. One thing I, I would want to ask is, I know either last year, or perhaps it was the year before, we had some conflicts due to some religious holidays?
We've taken care of those.
Okay, so that's been addressed.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board on this calendar? I think as you stated, there's not a, we don't have a lot of flexibility, it's sort of dictated to us by the state.
It is, yeah.
Do you need us to vote on this tonight in order to move forward with the career and technical centers? Do they need approval of this calendar tonight, or could we do it in April?
I'll defer that to the superintendent.
And if you, if you feel you need more time, then I would say possibly the budget workshop, if we could put that as a special item, because that's April 8th instead of waiting to the end of, end of April. I think it's, for a regional standpoint, it's usually nice to know end of March, by the, you know, middle of April, I mean, if we push it back to, we don't even know when our board meeting is going to be in April yet, if so, 1st of May is a little bit late, but if people want more time, I don't want you to feel rushed, if you want more time, then we could, we could make it work, you know, in the next couple of weeks, I'm sure.
Essentially, though, we're voting on something, we've just taken a look at.
Right, no, it's fine, yeah, we can wait.
I would suggest we at least wait until perhaps that, that public forum meeting. So if you could, over the next couple of weeks, just kind of look at this schedule, talk with some of your constituents, parents, students, see if there are any issues here, and we'll plan on voting on this. We'll make it an item for the April 8th meeting.
Great, thanks, Judy.
Okay, we will move on to item 15.0, our second public comments session. Is there anyone who would like to speak?
My name is Larry Bartlett, I'm the debate coach for Morse High School, and I have three of our premier debaters with us this evening, David Rice, and Balt Von Hune, and I think the third member you might be familiar with, Kyle. And I, I wanted to come this evening because there's something of special note that I'm, I'm sure you're going to want to hear about. We, we had a tremendously successful debate season this year. We had 20 students that participated over the year, they didn't all debate, but they all participated in, in, in our practices and so forth. The season ended with the state meet, and we had six of our, our best debaters participating. We competed against 17 schools, and we came in third place out of 17 schools. And both Balt and David participated, David came in second in the JV division, which was remarkable. And even more remarkable, for the second year in a row, undefeated as the best debater, number-one Lincoln Douglas debater in the state of Maine, was Kyle. Having, having won the honor of the top state Lincoln Douglas debater as a sophomore was amazing, with an undefeated record, but to do it two years in a row is unheard of in the years that I've been coaching, I can tell you that. So you all need to be proud of what happens at Morse, we have some very bright students. Thank you.
Hey, that's cool, congratulations. Is that the attire for the debate, by the way, the, the shorts and the shirt, like that, or?
The robe, right.
Okay, good. Busy guys. My name is Mike Tatro, and I am a parent of a third grader at the West Bath School. And I just wanted to thank Tim and Patrick and the board for agreeing to form a choice transportation subcommittee. I'm here on behalf of the school advisory group in West Bath. It's a topic that those of you who know the school advisory group know that we care a lot about, so I really appreciate your responsiveness, and wanted to thank you on behalf of the school advisory group, and to say that we look forward to working with you, Tim and Patrick, on sort of figuring out how to frame the issue, how to involve all the folks. I heard loudly and clearly the topic about money, I think the points about not recommending anything that has negative impact on any other schools, which other schools to involve, and how, are sort of design elements that we can build in on further conversation, so I just wanted to say thank you for your responsiveness, and we'll look forward to following up with you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any... Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay, we'll move on to item 16.1, setting next meeting dates and locations. The public forum to discuss the proposed school budget, that is set for April 8th at 6:00 p.m. Any issues with that date? I don't think there were any, we're all set for that. And then we need to determine a date for our next, our April Board meeting. Patrick, any suggestions?
I'm thinking the week of April 29th. I don't know if people can do that week, doesn't necessarily have to do on a Monday, but...
How does everybody's Monday, the 29th, look?
I'm around.
So I got to do it. I was hoping you'd do one. All right, I can do the 29th. 29th works every way off.
He's just bumping it back a week.
Okay, we'll make that for April 29th, 6:00 p.m. at Fisher Mitchell. Let me just add that, if you don't mind, so I don't forget. Okay, we will move on to item 16.3. We need to move to executive session to discuss personnel matter. Is there a motion to go to executive session?
Seconded.
Seconded by Alan, seconded by Steve. All those in favor? None opposed?